Today is Monday, October 24th, 2016. We're meeting as a committee of the whole. It is 8:17. I would ask that you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance?
... to the flag of the United States of America. Two, three, public, for which it stands, one nation, with their God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Spencer, I'd ask that you call a roll.
Kennedy.
Here.
Hanquist, absent. Wagner.
Here.
Mullenner.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Sabatino, absent. Leader.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Palmsky.
Here.
York.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
Twelve present, two absent. We have a quorum. On to announcements. Any announcements from the dice? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. Do we have anybody signed up? Nobody signed up for public?
No one's signed up. But could we back up for announcements because?
If you'd like, we can.
Thank you.
Okay.
The early voting people informed me that first day today, over 600 people voted. That's the height of it. So, thank you.
And we're starting a little late today. I didn't want to start while they were clearing out. So it took them about 10, 15 minutes to clear out. So, okay, public comments? No public comments? I won't go into the spiel of what we ask for people to do with public comments since there aren't any signed up. Is there anybody in the audience who did not have an opportunity to sign up who wishes to address the council at this time? Mr. McLeaster?
(inaudible).
Okay. No member of the public wishes to address us? That closes public comment. On to business before the committee. Review of our fiscal 2017 budget. Couple things I'm going to throw out there before we get started with Mr. Grabowski. This is our start of the annual budget season. I think everybody here's gone through this before. As council is aware, we are required by state statute to pass our budget by the end of this year, December 31st. If all goes well, we usually make sure that we have a couple of meetings between the end of the year and when we actually formally pass the budget, usually sometime around first or second week of December. And that is the plan this year as well. In your onboard docs, there's a partial schedule that just covers what we're going to cover this evening. We do not plan to meet on the fifth Monday of this month, which is next Monday. The next meeting in which we will continue to cover the budget will be November 7th. Staff has committed to get at least a partial schedule out by the end of this week, similar to previous years where they put forth what potentially we're going to cover in the meetings in the weeks to come. That's important for a couple of reasons. First of all, it lets council know what we'll be considering, but council should also be aware that staff makes, staff plans their schedule based on that schedule. So if we're going over police budget or we're going over fire budget, you'll see the police or fire chief here. I bring that up for a couple of reasons. First of all, we will do everything we can to stay on schedule. There's been occasion, but we try to avoid it where we have staff here and they're staying till late at night and then we don't get to them. So we're going to do everything we can to stay on schedule because staff does plan around and plan to be at that meeting. The other thing I would add is, as always, you know, we've got 4,000 line items in this budget. Staff does everything they can to answer our questions spontaneously. However, if and when you, we get the schedule, if you do have some questions that you are aware of ahead of time, it's always beneficial to try to shoot those to staff, whether it's the individual department head or city manager Grabowski. Give them a little time to prepare and maybe get an even more thorough answer than you would get just spontane- spontaneously ask them. So if you have questions beforehand, it's always, I know appreciated by staff, to give them as much time as prepared to give as thorough of an answer. As always with budget, we won't, I don't think we'll see any of it tonight, but while these are formal meetings and motions can be made at any time, I think it's been efficient and worked in the past that we go with what we call the circle back list. So if and when we get to a line item and we have questions or conversation, we usually have a five to 20-minute productive conversation. And then if any action is going to happen, we typically ask staff to keep a circle back list and we put it on the circle back list. That is the same, my intent to do the same this year, although like I said, tonight it's just an introduction, so I don't anticipate any circle backs. And then finally, as with past years, I'm not sure the quality of decisions that we make after 10:30 a.m. or 10:30 p.m., we get a little punchy. So it is my intent to make sure we do not go past 10:30 on any of these meetings. It is October. I think we have enough time in the schedule so that we don't end up having any meetings like that. So that's my way of kicking it off, Mr. Grabowski. I am going to turn it over to you, and the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Before you is the 2017 budget as put together by myself, Tom Trizine, Julian McDonough, and their staff and all the department directors. It is once again organized, consistent with the GFOA standards, which is an award that the finance department has received the past 10 years, and includes summary information, line item detail by fund, justification forms for any changes that are in excess of 5% and more than $2,500 over the previous year's appropriation, individual fund balance schedules, budget and financial policies and procedures, and supplemental information. If you recall, in 2015, the council and staff participated in a strategic planning process which incorporated ideas and thoughts from various Elmhurst stakeholder groups. The resulting top three issues that were made priorities included stormwater, both projects and policies, economic development, and sustaining the city's financial position. Additionally, goals of strengthening our communications to the community, removing barriers to the zoning process, and continuing technology upgrades in all departments were prioritized. We, of course, continue to progress and address these strategic priorities and focus on providing the highest quality service delivery in the most cost-effective manner. In 2017, the total number of full-time employees is budgeted to decrease by two positions, including the reduction of the full-time second shift equipment maintenance supervisor and the reduction of a full-time position in the administrative department to a contract position. Recall last budget, we eliminated the second shift in the public works garage for maintenance of vehicles. And once that supervisor role was vacated, we were able to reduce that position. And in all departments, we continue to evaluate proper staffing levels, whether that means increasing or decreasing. In addition to the strategic plan, the city of Elmhurst has conducted the citizen survey biannually since 1994 to gather opinions and determine satisfaction with community services from the residents. Results of the survey are used as a tool in developing future budgets. Key results in the 2016 survey that impacted the 2017 budget included improvements with street conditions, primarily due to the age and harsh winter conditions. And I think everyone knows, we received significant grant funds to the city for street rehab projects in 2017 and 2018. We continue that, which will allow the next fiscal year, street resurfacing budget to be directed to those streets most in need of repair. The survey continues to highlight residents' concern regarding stormwater management. The city has experienced four significant flooding events in the last eight years. Working with Christopher Burke Engineering, we developed the comprehensive flood mitigation plan to provide the maximum flood protection to the most people in the most cost-effective manner in the quickest timeframe. And over the last four years, the city council has approved nine stormwater projects at an estimated cost of $21.5 million. 2017 and 18 budgets include funding for three additional projects at an estimated cost of $13.3 million and preliminary engineering costs for expanded stormwater infrastructure improvements in the southwest area of the city. To fund these project costs, the city council, of course, approved a quarter percent sales tax, which will retire the debt service on bonds necessary for these improvements. Proposed revenues for the city of Elmhurst for the next fiscal year total $127,240,371. The largest revenue source is sales, property, and utility taxes comprising $48,128,000 or 38% of total revenues. Service charges are next at $29,445,000 or 23% of total revenues, and that includes $23.6 million for water and sewer service charges. In the general fund, which is the major operating fund of the city, the proposed budget expenditures are $62,424,894 for the 2017 fiscal year. Proposed revenues to the general fund are $58,819,000. This requires a use of fund balance of $3.6 million roughly, for a projected general fund balance at the end of fiscal 2017 of $16.4 million. One thing that I'd like to note is, as part of budgeting and moving fund balances back and forth, we're proposing that $500,000 be transferred for stormwater purposes specifically for the voluntary home buyout program. As we identify priority projects and include the remaining balance in the stormwater buyouts, which we haven't spent so far, staff and public works committee will make recommendations to purchase homes most helpful in this effort. We felt that trying to balance out everything, including the, where we need to be in the 25% to 33% of fund balance, that this was a strong possibility for us to consider. And another $937,000 of that is GO debt, which is being abated from the property tax bills and needs to be paid out of the general fund revenues or transfers. The remaining balance, as I said, falls within the city fund balance goal policy of 25% to 33% of operating expenditures. Getting back to sales tax, or excuse me, revenues, I'd like to take you through a little bit of where we came up with proposed revenues for the next year. The municipal 1% sales tax is projected to be $12,606,000, and which is an increase of 2% compared to the prior year. Sales tax does remain the greatest single source of revenue to the city's general fund. And of course, we've taken significant action to stabilize other sources of revenue to the general fund so that we can decrease the reliance on automotive-related sales tax in the event we see a sharp decline in those sales. We have been able to balance our reliance through economic development efforts. However, this reality must be recognized as a significant factor when we review our revenues and expenditures and plan for the future.
Bless you.
This fact also supports the city council's general fund balance goals to allow that fund balance cushion the city's revenue loss in a struggling economy, the loss of a commercial business that generates significant tax revenue, or any change in internet sales at the federal level. Regarding the prepared food and beverage tax, that's the 1% tax that we assess, including alcoholic beverages. That's become a consistent, significant contributor to the general fund. We project that to increase at 3% for the next budget to the amount of $1.3 million. Property taxes. The 2016 tax levy, which will be collected the summer of 2017, is budgeted with no increase in the general fund portion of the levy, a $937,140 decrease in the debt service portion of the tax levy, consistent with the city council's plan to reduce that reliance on property tax to pay debt service, and an increase of 13.5% in the fire and police pension portion of the levy, primarily due to changing to a more current mortality table and a flat investment return in 2015. It is admirable that the city has been able to reduce the levy each of the past three years, four with fiscal year 2017, including the complete elimination of debt service on the property tax bill. However, staff does have concern, as other revenue sources are reduced or expenditures increased, that fund balance will continue to decline to a point where consideration of a significant tax levy increase would be necessary, similar to the 2010 levy. And we continue to have that. We're having that discussion at the finance committee, and we just wanted to make the council aware of that. Moving on to state income tax. This ongoing source of revenue to the capital improvement fund allows the fund to spend on infrastructure requirements. And projected 2017 state income tax revenue reflects an increase of 2% over the past fiscal year. The local motor fuel tax, which is 1.5 cents per gallon, is proposed at a revenue of $366,000 and reflects a 13% increase compared to the prior year. And that's preliminarily due, excuse me, it's primarily due to anticipated volume increase from the new gas station at York and Lake. And these funds are designated for stormwater system improvements. Next, the utility taxes. Elmhurst currently allocates telecommunications tax revenue 75% to general fund and 25% to the capital improvement fund. Telecommunications tax revenues continue to struggle due to the expanded use of internet for phone services and the reduction of landlines to homes. It's not applicable to internet phone. Telecommunication tax revenue is projected to increase 1% for the next fiscal year, as is the electric tax, which continues to erode because of the inflation factor. And then our natural gas tax of 1% is also projected to increase 1%, again due to inflation. So excluding any changes in the use tax rates, future revenue growth of the electric and gas use taxes is limited to increase in usage with no increases in the rates. Next item is rubbish collection revenue. In 2013, we approved a contract for five years with allied waste, and the projected revenues for 2017 reflect the terms in the pricing of the contract. License and, excuse me, licenses and permits, that's a fee that's scheduled and collected for operation of community development department, including the building department, planning and zoning, and economic development, and also portions of public works and the fire departments relative to plan, review, and inspection services. Most of the permit fees are updated based on CPI, and the permit fee budgeted for 2017 is projected at $2.2 million, and it contemplates 125 new homes and several commercial projects for the next year. Also included is the vehicle license fees, which are a significant source of revenue, $1.225 million annually, and all proceeds from that goes to street improvements. Some other significant revenue sources that I'd like to touch on, water and sewer rates. We anticipate 4% rate increases from DuPage Water Commission for water in the next year, the next two years, excuse me. And sewage rates will be impacted by significant infrastructure replacement and upgrades in the collection system and at the wastewater treatment plant. That's a very significant investment for the community. It's over 28 years old and definitely in need of some infrastructure upgrades. We heard that last year. We continue that next year. Not only that, but we have EPA mandates and flood mitigation regulations that we need to follow so that we can continue to upgrade our infrastructure. Regarding the parking system, we don't anticipate any fee increases and project any at this time, but we do want to do a comprehensive analysis over the next year of parking fees and fines compared to our surrounding communities so that we can come back to the council in future years and let you know where we stand, whether there's any need for an increase to remain competitive. Total revenue for the parking system is projected to be $2.1 million, of which $853,000 is attributable to daily and permit fees, including the addition of fee spaces for employee and daily fee parking at the Addison parking deck. Regarding MFT, which is the state funding from motor fuel tax, that is projected to be at $1,091,000 in 2017. That leads me to the five TIF districts and where they'll stand. TIF 1, which of course is the central business district. Property tax revenue is projected to increase slightly for 2017 due to projected increase in the EAV combined with anticipated tax rate decrease compared to prior year. The 2017 budget includes improvements to the Schiller Court parking lot and anticipates a surplus distribution of property tax increment unless dedicated to a capital project. This TIF expires in December 31st of 2021. TIF 2, which is Lake and Walnut, this is an interesting situation because it expires December 31st of 2016. The revenues that accrue to this fund are anticipated to decrease due to the portion of the redevelopment project that was released and included in the new TIF 5. Earlier in 2016, the council took action to establish TIF 5, which will interact with TIF 2 for land acquisition. And based on this action, funds in TIF 2 will be transferred to the Church Road, Lake Street TIF, which is TIF 5 fund in fiscal year 2016 and 17. We do receive a payment in 2017 after the expiration. It's a little unique in how TIFs are funded. But all that will be transferred to TIF 5. TIF 3, which is the Route 83 St. Charles development, revenues projected for this area are anticipated to increase slightly again in 2017 due to projected increase in EAV and the anticipated tax rate decrease compared to the prior year. City of Elmhurst by agreement has committed to a 3% rate of inflation increase in EAV to be credited to all affected taxing districts. An increment above that 3% will be TIF increment credited to the city's revenue to finance expenditures. However, at this time, no distribution is budgeted for 2017 or 18. That TIF expires in December 31st of 2019. TIF 4, which is the North York redevelopment area, due to the timing of the redevelopment within the TIF, a slight increase is projected in 2017. Property tax increment is projected to increase significantly in 2018, reflecting the completion of several redevelopment projects. Expenditures in fiscal year 2016 include, that's for 2017, yes, no, excuse me, they were costs associated with Han York Street redevelopment, and expenditures in 2017 include costs with new sidewalks in North York Corridor and any other possible redevelopment that occurs. This TIF was established in 2012 and expires in 2035. Lastly, the TIF 5 Church Road, Lake Street redevelopment area. This redevelopment area was approved earlier in 2016 to help the area along Lake Street in an underdeveloped areas coinciding with TIF 2. It's expected to see some redevelopment of an auto sales project in 2017, which will include land acquisition. Funds will be designated from TIF 2 into this TIF specifically for this purpose, as I discussed in TIF 2. Overall, the EAV in Elmhurst is projected to increase 7.6% for the 2016 levy, which was somewhat expected due to the economy and timing of property assessments. Looking at the real estate market, it does appear that home prices continue to climb and turnover in a timely fashion. The fiscal plan that's before you continues to follow the results of the 2015 strategic plan and emphasizes stormwater relief through a number of projects and policies, economic development to continue Elmhurst's growth, and sustains the city's strong financial position. It's a sound fiscal plan for the city of Elmhurst for the next fiscal year, and I would request the council's positive consideration. As I said in the beginning, I'd like to thank the finance staff, especially Tom, Julian McDonough, Ryan Bruins, and Yolanta Moriel, along with the department directors for their input and cooperation during this process. Tonight, we're here to answer any questions. However, given the fact that you've just seen this for the first time tonight, you may need time to review that, of course. As Mayor Morley said, we will send a schedule out by the end of this week for budget review by department, which will start at the November 7th meeting, at the conclusion of the city council meeting on November 7th.
Okay. City manager Grabowski, thanks for the setup. I think it's a good start. A lot of good information here. Any initial conversations or comments for staff or city manager Grabowski? Alderman York.
Thank you, your honor. So, tonight at our committee meeting, we just began looking at the tax levy portion of our budget cycle. And I'm just going to reference that there is a work paper posted on board docs that our committee looked at, and it includes the budgeted information as far as the tax levy is concerned. And I would just ask that people would take a look at that worksheet. As the city manager indicated, the budget as it's presented uses a general fund of about $3.6 million. The ending balance, as he outlined, is just shy of $16.5 million. And while the general fund is being utilized, it is still above the parameters, the 25% and the 33% of operating expenses, the general fund stays above both of those parameters by $4.8 million and just over $1 million respectively. So while we're using fund balance, we are still in fine shape, and this is, again, all based on budget. We're not sure exactly where, what's going to be our recommendation on the tax levy.
Thank you. Alderman York. Additional comments or questions? Alderman Bram?
Yeah, I guess just one quick question. Alderman York already hinted at it on page 89 of what we received tonight, shows the nice chart that I always like to reference, the graph, if you will, of where our fund balance is and where it's projected to be heading. The concern, I guess, and if there's any comments for this this evening or not, is that the projected fund balance was significantly above the 25% to 33% of expenditures, and now we're getting close to that top end of the four months. Is there a staff concern over that? Or is that part of the review that Alderman York has already referenced when it comes to the property tax levy?
I will add, it's up on the screen, Alderman Bram, but, and if city manager Grabowski wants to expand on this, but it was part of city manager Grabowski's presentation today is that although our fund balances are healthy, there is a, I don't know if I'd call it a concern. Staff is noting to city council that, and I think all of us are aware of this, we had a pretty significant adjustment in taxes about five years ago, and it put us in a fantastic position, quite frankly. But we're balancing that by doing a ton of stormwater projects, necessary stormwater projects. So I think staff communicated tonight, and I heard from city, I heard from Kevin York, that while our fund balances are healthy, there is a note of caution that if we continue down this road, you're going to see that line dip into there. So, and I'll add, a turnover city manager Grabowski to add to that.
That's certainly a fair characterization, and I guess you kind of answered the question. That was the exact conversation we started having at the finance committee tonight. We anticipate to continue that.
Okay. So that's what I was looking for, is, I guess, a little bit more details. Is the property tax levy one alternative? Or what's on the table to be looked at? Or is everything on the table? That was kind of the feedback.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Alderman Levin.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things you noted was the car sales. Is that something that, without going into particular dealers, but is that something across the board that you're seeing? Or can you tell if it's luxury lines? Is it something that's happening in other communities as well?
My comments were more based on all revenues and our fund balances. In the event that we did see significant drop-off as we did in '08, '09, we want to be cautious. Right now, we're not seeing a significant dip from the auto dealers. It was more of a cautionary as we look forward.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, as the city manager Grabowski said, I know that staff's been working on this and thank them for their hard work, but council is just basically getting started on this and getting an opportunity to review this stuff. As I said, fifth Monday, we will not be meeting next week, but we will be meeting on the 7th. Staff has committed to get us a schedule that will at least cover the next couple of meetings so that we can be prepared. I'll reiterate, if you have questions that you're aware of ahead of time, let's give staff as much time as possible to pull those answers together. So I'd ask you to submit them to city manager Grabowski and/or the appropriate department head. Alderman Levin.
Sorry, I had one other question in terms of the process. When will we be getting that chart that could give us a start on reviewing some of these materials? Is that something we would see yet this week in terms of where we're going next in the budget book?
Yes, we will get you that chart by the end of this week.
Thank you.
Alderman Mullen, or you can fill them in.
Hasn't changed.
I just want to make sure that the city manager agreed with you.
All right. Okay. All right. Good first start, and we're going to go to Alderman Bram.
Yeah, Alderman Levin's question, I mean, maybe if you know today, can you tell us the first two that we can get started on?
Hold on. Let's give the city manager a break. I mean, I've said three times, he's gonna get it to us by the end of the week.
Plus, we have a week off.
Plus, we have a week off. City manager, are you cared to opine? Are you aware at this point?
We usually try to schedule the library for that first night so that they can come in and, unless there's any circle backs, complete their process.
All right.
And the museum, generally. We try to get those two in that first evening.
Great. Any other comments or questions? Alderman Wagner?
We have a schedule. No questions, sir.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn. motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Mulliner. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, we're adjourned.